Everyone, we're going to go ahead and get started with our Commissioner's Status Update Meeting. Today's date is May 6, 2025. The time is 10:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Everline, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment. Hearing none. We'll go on to our first item. Justice Building Update with David Mendez.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Mendez with Turner and Townsend in Erie. I've given you an update to my spreadsheet. The change is not much from the last time you received it, although I have mailed down a couple of the items and am going to move forward with signing of some changes. But nothing new has popped up on any of this. Some guardrail issues that are coming up, more of a fit and finish rather than any kind of a change requirement. So some guardrails terminations weren't looked at need different approaches. The landing guardrail, for example, if you look at the second page, that RFI, our CUA 153, RFI 201. So we have the bottom floor. As you come down that, there's the stairs that are underneath, and we want to provide a fence at that point so somebody can't hide underneath that stair at the end of the day. So we thought that would be prudent to put something there to guard against that. There's another one with tablet arms. There's a credit. If you look at that DC 63, it's CUA 150 on that second page. There's a credit there of 8969. Those are the jurors' tables or the jurors' seats. They called for a fold-down writing tablet service, and those, they've had some problems with the manufacturer that they're not available. So they may be available in several months. And so we've given a credit for what that is, that we can purchase directly and have those installed at a later date. That's kind of, our hand is forced on that. They're just not available. So we've got a credit on that. There's one item that needs a little more research. Jeff and I were just talking about that, and that's at the very bottom of the page, on the second page, is the tablet arms. So they're asking for an additional $4,600 out of that credit. So it's a credit of 89 and an add of 46. That is, apparently, they had an issue with the species of wood that was specified. It wasn't specified in the original documents, and what they've called for is more expensive. So I need to do a little research on that one before I get back to the contractor on it. So there's some of that still going on. We're still looking good on the percentages of those contingencies that are available. We still have money left in those contingency items that would be accredited at the end, assuming that we don't have any betterment items that we want to add to the project. So it's looking good. The progress of the project, they're done on the, what we're calling the third floor. It's actually fourth because we have a lower level than 1, 2, 3. So the third floor is basically finished. They've got some touch-up that they're doing. We've got the design team coming in to do punch lists on that real soon. Second floor is just slightly behind that. First floor is slightly behind the second floor, and the bottom floor is to the point where they're finishing out, putting in the ceiling tiles, getting all those inspections completed, and the painting is going on and wrapping all of that up. They poured the Sally Port, that's the newest thing, and the asphalt approaches on the exterior of the building. They're doing some of the landscaping is coming together now, and the finishes are going through. One change that I don't have on this list is the city has come back and said that our ADA ramps that are existing out on Garden are noncompliant with ADA standards. So we have a 2% maximum cross, or yeah, cross slope and a 5% maximum direction of travel, and there's some that are out. So they're requiring that we demo a little more concrete than was originally required in the plans. So we've got some adds that are going to happen there. Any questions about progress?
Questions? No?
I have a question. Are you generally pleased with how things are turning out fiscally and the work product?
I'm a little disappointed in some of the pickier items that have been called out that we've had to spend a lot more time on. So we've had some overtime charges within these changes.
Can you give us an example?
An example would be I'm having to pay special inspections, having to pay more time because of the way that the inspections are happening. For instance, we have an above-ceiling tile inspection that has to occur. The amount of time allotted for that, so we might have a full floor available, and they're doing three rooms at a time.
For the inspections?
For the inspections. And so I'm having to have our special inspectors there as well. So that's running some costs that I really didn't anticipate. And so in that regard, there's a little bit, the crosswalks, you know, that's one of those things that it's part of our, you know, you own, from behind curb to your buildings, you own that part of it. So that is a requirement that you, that those are all in compliance. You know, it's a little irritating that we come back and they put a level on something and it doesn't meet specifications, so we have to remove that and replace it up to ADA standards. That's always kind of an irritant.
So this is the inspection process? It's not something that we could have done on our end?
No, and the contractor is doing a, you know, a very good job.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Everline.
Considering the scope of work, you did an excellent job.
Yeah, I think the contractor is doing a great job. There's no complaint there.
Well, you get some attaboys, too.
I appreciate that, but yeah, it's all about the, you know, monitoring and keeping track of the contractor to make sure that they're doing everything. And it's more of a reinforcement. There have been very little conflict between how they're doing the work and how we need it to be done. So they've done a very good job.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, Commissioners. Jeff Voeller, for the record, we've been talking over the last couple of months about the idea of either doing blinds or interior film in the interior glass walls. And so I've done a little bit more research. Initially, I brought to you a proposal to do all interior and exterior windows with blinds, and then you asked me to give a breakdown on that if we just did interior as well as looking at a film option. So on your desk, I put a couple photos that I took. We had some samples put in, in the upper level. On the left, you'll see a 40-inch option and then a 48-inch option. That's the difference between those two. And so if we were to do the interior film on the third floor, to do all windows so that everything is uniform and looks alike, you've got $7,800 to do the 40-inch or $9,400 to do the 48-inch. If you turn to the next page, one of the downsides we found to the blinds when we looked at that, the samples, is that while it does provide some privacy and would protect screens and, you know, something on somebody's desk, it doesn't provide full privacy for somebody that would be, for example, changing to go to court in their office. So as you can see with that picture, that, you know, you can visibly see somebody standing, you know, behind that film. I met with the prosecutor, and, you know, they took a look at it, and I think they would still prefer to go the blind option. I believe Stan is here, if you have any questions on kind of his thoughts and preference on that. And then, just kind of for reference, for future thinking, if you look at that third page, the film company also put a solar film on an exterior window, and so that could be something we could consider in Lua blinds. My thought on that, so the left-hand pane that you see on that window has the solar on it, so that's the darker one versus the one on the right that does not have that. I think if we're finding that, you know, those offices are getting warm, that, you know, that is an option that we can consider. I think that's something that would be easy to come in and do in the future. You know, my recommendation would be maybe we give it a year and see, you know, if the heating, cooling, and the actual solar blazing of those windows is adequate. But maybe on that west side of the building, as the evening sun comes around and starts to heat that west side of the building when the sun is the hottest, we could potentially see some problems there. But I'm not sure that that's something we necessarily have to address right now. I just wanted to put that out there as, you know, maybe something we could consider for the future. I mean, if you look at the last page on the very back of that packet, it has the breakdown. So the first quote that we received to do full blinds, so that would be interior and exterior, was $62,000, just talking in round numbers. If we go just interior, it's broken down on the right-hand side, so interior versus exterior, we do lose some of the discounting that we got because we get a volume discount at 100 blinds. And so we're at 84 blinds to just do interiors. So that would be the third floor, the judge's office, and the AMP offices would be around $50,000. We could do a mix of film and blinds. There's an option there that if we did that, we could be looking at $24,000. Or then again, going back to the option of just doing full interior blinds would be that $50,000. So kind of need some guidance on which direction we want to go with that. I think if you have questions specifically for the prosecutors, I know Stan is here as well, that he can address some of those with his thoughts and, you know, how that would impact his department.
Questions?
Probably not questions, but I see the need for the full interior blinds at this point, and I like the idea of waiting for the exterior to see if the film will be sufficient or even if. I know in my office that it will get hotter in the spring or fall. The summer's actually not an issue for the way the sun goes, so I think waiting on the exterior would be prudent.
Commissioner Everline.
Well, we got issues up here on this ceiling, and it's, we've do it for this long.
So are you thinking, take care of the interior and wait for the exterior?
Absolutely.
All right.
As far as budgeting goes, that would fit into the FFNE budget that we have currently. So that would be an additional cost to the building other than it being a betterment.
Okay. I think you all have direction then.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One last item, if I might. There's a project similar to this that's starting up. I've had a request from the Stevens County, Washington Commissioners to come visit the site, and I wanted to make sure that we didn't have any objections with Cooney County.
Objection?
No.
I'll...
Nope. Thank you for asking, though.
I'll communicate that date in the future.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Definitely taking notice of this building and are very impressed by it. And I think we hear that in the community, and I think we're going to have more requests for tours in the near future.
Okay. Okay. All right. I'm sure there'll be other tours, too, in the downstairs garage entrance versus the upstairs regular entrance, right? So anything else?
No.
No? All right. Thank you. Item number two, presentation from John Getty, insurance agent. And John Getty.
I submitted a quarterly update for your review, and I'd entertain any questions about that, but I've got a couple of other items. Commissioner Duncan called with some questions about insurance on the fairgrounds, and it got me thinking. The rodeo, the Professional Rodeo Cowboys Association requires that they be named as an additional insured. ICRIMP won't do that because it's against Idaho code. It costs the fairgrounds about $6,000 for last year, and I think it would be to our benefit to challenge PRCA because what they're getting is a piece of paper that can't be enforced legally, and it's costing the county $6,000.
A quick question.
Yes, yes, sir.
If it can't be enforced, why are we being charged $6,000?
Because the rodeo association will not sanction the rodeo unless they're named as an additional insured.
Their name.
This is a case with, I think, 13 rodeos in the state.
Okay. And has someone told them that there is no coverage even though the perception of coverage exists?
I tried to explain it to them last year, but they didn't accept it.
Well, they're going to want it, right? So is there a way that we can get, and maybe you were going into this, so I apologize if I cut you off on that. Is there a way that we can find that insurance or a rider or something like that for them?
The fairgrounds looked to the other rodeos, other fair rodeos, and found a carrier that was acceptable. We started down that road, but we ran out of time because it was just a short timeframe that we had an opportunity to work on it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The last item on my second quarter report talked about reviewing leases, and I'll give you a practical example that came up just the other day. The public defender's office moved at some point. We're still providing coverage on a building that they no longer occupy to the tune of a little over $3 million. That's wasted money, and I've asked that I be advised of the insurance provisions of leases so I can catch that on the way in, and I would suggest that again. The sheriff's office, in their relocation, wanted us to wait from our last walkthrough. The concern is the contents of that building, and I was going to work with Bridgette. She's no longer there, but we need to set up a time for me to walk through, probably with Erica Severance as well, so we can make a determination of what's actually there as far as contents goes. Finally, Jeff and I are going to work through the old sheriff's office campus. Those buildings out there have not been walked through in a while. We're waiting for the property manager at the sheriff's office to get back from vacation to set that up. I'd gladly entertain any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I have some questions. It sounds like, you know, we have some i's that may not be dotted and some t's that may not be crossed. And so I would like to understand what we can do to develop a system so that you're informed of what's going on, so that way we don't have these kinds of oops moments where we discover it. And we never want to discover these things after the fact because that's when it's expensive. So what can we do as a county from a policy perspective so that, you know, you are, that you can get the information you need to ensure that we're properly covered? And it might include having more walkthroughs and more engagement with the different departments because, you know, we have these multiple elected officials that largely run their own silos of their, you know, within their purview. And a lot of times, one hand doesn't know what the other hand is doing.
Commissioner, I suggest a couple of things. Do you still have elected official meetings where all your department heads and elected officials get together?
Yes, we do.
I'd be glad to address them about this issue. The second thing is I'm assuming all leases for the county go through the Commissioner's office. If I had an opportunity to review the insurance provisions of those leases, that would keep me better informed. The other thing is when a department moves from one building to another, oftentimes I don't get that information. And I think if I sat down with elected officials and department heads, that would resolve that issue.
Okay. And any other activities that you can think of? Because, you know, the problem is that we, some people just don't know to let you know, and you don't know what you don't know. Not in a bad way, it's just that you don't know. And so who's asking the questions and how do we identify these things?
Well, and Erica Severance has worked through the ICRIMP schedules, and I'm meeting her again on Thursday morning to go through those, and she has some questions that I think I can help her with.
Mm-hmm.
And we've done that, not on a regular basis, but occasionally, and I think it helps.
Well, I definitely would like to have you attend at least every other, quarterly, I should say, elected official meeting, just to kind of talk and ask questions and, you know, what's going on, what are you doing, what's new, what's not, and so forth. I think that's prudent. And then just more engagement so that we can make sure that you are aware, and ICRIMP is aware of what is actually happening so that we don't have an issue and then discover after the facts. We had no idea you all were doing this.
And Commissioner, I'd much rather see us have something on the schedule insured that we don't need to than having something uninsured that we need to have on the schedule.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Well, perhaps we can try to get together on a quarterly basis as well.
That'd be great.
So we can have that discussion. And I think probably our civil department would play a role in that because they see these contracts, and so they're going to know if there's an insurance clause of some sort or something that could have a financial, the potential for financial losses, which is really why we have insurance.
Correct.
Yeah. So, okay. Any other questions, comments? No? All right.
Thank you.
Well, that was easy. Thank you. Okay. Onto item three. Assess, collect, distribute committee update. This is Jelena Hildreth.
We've been trying to meet twice or every couple of weeks because of the Simpatico testing and upgrade. We're trying to keep on top of things. I don't really have a whole lot to report other than the fact that I just want to say how beneficial it is for all three departments for us to be getting together like this because with changes in this, with this upgrade, it's going to change our reporting, which affects both the treasurer and the clerk's office, and in turn, you know, affects the State Tax Commission and our taxing districts. So anyway, it's been very beneficial to meet. I just want to quickly say that we're waiting on some things from the state that they've, from Sandy Bowens. She's the one that does a lot of the programming. And since we're trying to go to the state reporting system, the dashboard, she's the one that we're kind of waiting on. But, and I say we, it's all three, you know, departments. But one thing that we did talk about, and I don't know that it's really been addressed with the board, but there was a hiccup in the last year with the solid waste billing through the, or it was done through the assessor's office, and now the treasurer's office is doing it, and they're finally in a groove, and things this year have been going a lot smoother. So I just wanted to touch base on that. Personal property seems to be on track as far as the abstracts from the assessor's office. So as a whole, we're just trying to figure out how, once we go to, once we upgrade, like I said, the reporting is going to be completely different. We're just trying to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's and that we will be able to get everything that we need in the clerk's office based on the new reporting style.
Any questions? Assessor Kovacs, you've come up here. I presume you want to add a little more to this?
Yes, Commissioners. Bailey Kovacs, Cooney County Assessor. The board may recall that earlier this year, there was a meeting, and it involved the treasurer's office to make a request to expend some of their funds to essentially create what is their own component of Simpatico. We're learning that not much progress has been made in that regard, and part of it, a small part of it, depends upon what Jelena was saying, is getting some scripts from the State Tax Commission. We have, as an organization, we have made multiple requests to the Tax Commission for that script. I've made it. My chief deputy's made it. I believe IT has made it. And the resources that the Tax Commission has is very limited. Typically, it's not unlike many other organizations where you react to the fire that's burning the hottest at the moment and everything else is on the back burner. The operating property doesn't really occur until the end of the year typically, and so typically what occurs, what happens is the Tax Commission responds and provides those scripts at the tail end or just before the timeframe when they're going to do the process. And so what I would like to do, we just talked about this earlier this week, myself and my chief deputy, I, we have not broached this issue yet with anybody else. I'm mentioning it now for the first time, but there are other resources besides the Tax Commission that can put the script together. It would come at an extra cost through the XTR contract that we have. They have the knowledge, they have the expertise. I would like to consider approaching the board to expend funds in that regard and have XTR put that script together and then share it with the state. And that way, we can realize the benefit and the advantages that will accrue from Simpatico much sooner rather than essentially losing a whole year.
Does the contractor have the logic for these scripts? Do they understand what needs to be done for these?
Yeah, they do. You know, I don't speak on and for in behalf of the XTR contractor, but I'll give you an example. In the year that the state legislature passed House Bill 292, I took that legislative change and I asked, and I got a copy of the script that the state put together, and I actually asked XTR to review it. It cost us about $1,000 to have them review it. They discovered there were no problems for the assessor's office, but there were significant problems in the script that would happen to the treasurer's office. And that information was passed along. Now, it was totally up to the treasurer in terms of whether they reacted to that or what they did with it. But yes, XTR has a very, they're essentially the software company that made the program, if you want to say that. So yes, they've got proprietary knowledge.
Yeah. I guess, is it statute-driven, some of these changes, or is this just us fixing, you know, continuing down the road to recovery, if you will?
Well, I don't know the nature of the operating property script. We typically don't, in the assessor office, get involved in that. That's typically handled all by the state, and then typically they'll produce a role and it goes to our IT, and our IT does their own processes. So I can't speak to the technical issues or the differences.
Well, I guess, you know, just from my perspective, I am okay with looking at expending funds to have the scripts ready before the 11th hour so that we can make sure this stuff is working properly. But with that said, how do we know that those are the correct scripts?
Well, they will work closely together with the Tax Commission. They work together.
Okay. But it...
It won't happen in a vacuum.
All right. So, but the Tax Commission is responsive to them.
They have been in the past.
But they're not responsive to you and other people who've requested, and I just want to make sure that we're not just spending money and they're going to be in the same situation that we're in right now.
I don't think it's the way you characterize it, that they're not responsive to us, but they will be responsive to XTR. You could liken it to extending their labor force. If they don't have the time to do the programming, outsource it, essentially. And that doesn't mean it's not going to be right. There will be a coordination effort behind the scenes between XTR and the State Tax Commission. That has happened before, and it's ongoing.
Okay. Well, I wasn't sure. The way I understood it was that the Tax Commission was providing the scripts, so they're involved with the coding.
They have programmers that create their own scripts. We here in Cooney County have our own IT department. They produce scripts.
I understand.
XTR produces scripts.
Yeah, but they have to be modeled after what the Tax Commission wants. So if the Tax Commission doesn't have bandwidth right now, I'm... So if the tax commission doesn't have bandwidth right now, I just want to make sure they're going to have bandwidth if we pay another firm to go out and do this.
Well, really, all we're talking about right now is posing the question, leaving it up to the tax commission to acknowledge whether they're willing to work.
All right. Well, how about this? I'm okay if you want to investigate it and come back to the board, assuming that the board agrees with that.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. Scope of work, what the cost is going to be.
Yeah, just see if the contractor can, feel like they can get this done, and they can give us a good estimate of what the expense will be, then let's look at doing it.
I think that to, I think it would be good to involve the treasurer as well as IT, though, in it because Matt, for instance, knows up in IT. I mean, he's one that's reached out multiple times, and he's waiting on specific things. So I think it would be advantageous for us as a whole, for, you know what I'm saying, Bayla?
Well, my, nothing in my suggestion would exclude IT.
I know. I just meant it wouldn't come just directly from the assessor's office.
Yeah. The technical term is let's get her done.
Yeah. Because it's, we're being held up, and if we want to be on the state reporting system. And I think that was the goal, right, Bayla, is for us to kind of be not on our own island anymore?
Definitely. To be able to utilize the resources from...
Right.
And the knowledge and so forth from the tax commission and other counties.
All right. So, well, it sounds like there's at least some direction on next steps, so. Anything else?
Nothing else other than that. I will bring that back to the board.
Okay. All right. Any other questions up here?
No.
No? All right. Thank you. Public comment. Hearing none. 10:30. Meeting adjourned.